Good evening, this is the Lakeville Select Board enacting as the Waging Personnel Board as needed, meeting of October 11, 2022 at 5:00 PM at the Lakeville Police Station. Please ask if anybody is recording the meeting and announce that cable is taping the meeting. Okay. Okay, first thing is the Select Board announcements. Treasure Collector would like to remind residents that the real estate and personal property taxes for the second quarter are due November 1, 2022. The town clerk would like to remind residents to know that the deadline to register to vote in the Lakeville November 8 state election is October 29 at 5:00 PM. Massachusetts voters now have the option to vote early by mail in all elections. To request your vote by mail ballot, submit a signed application to the town clerk's office by 5:00 PM on November 1. Early voting in person is also going to take place at the Old Townhouse located at Two Precinct Street. Early voting begins on October 22 and ends on November 4. Further details and information can be found at the town clerk's website at www.lakvilleMA.org.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Only because a resident called to ask me, I believe, last date to register to vote for the fall town meeting is November 4, I think? I'm sure we can put that on there. We have a meeting, I think, before that.
I think once we vote to post the warrant, then the town clerk will provide us that information.
Yeah, just, yeah, only because I got at least one call, so that's November 4 to register for that.
Okay. Town Administrator's announcement?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I met last week with the Freetown Lakeville School District to discuss claims for the $100,000 earmark provided by the state in the FY23 budget. Funds must be spent before June 30, and floor renovation will cost substantially more than that amount, so the focus at this point will be on executing essential repairs to existing equipment.
Can I stop you there for question number three?
Yeah.
They've agreed, then, that it's essential repairs to existing equipment?
That's what the $100,000 can be used for, yeah.
Because there's no way we can fund what they're asking for?
Correct. Replacement of the playground would cost a great deal more than that.
Okay, thank you. Just want to make sure we're on the same page.
Yep. Select Board member Fabian and I participated in a meeting with SERPED, DCAM, Freetown, and members of the Legislative Delegation regarding weed mitigation in Long Pond. The discussion included an overview of mitigation measures used elsewhere and potential measures for Long Pond. The group agreed to continue the discussion. Work on the fire station continues. The areas have been framed and most of the drywall has been installed. Painters on site will complete the painting and drywall. Flooring, plumbing, and electrical work will be completed in the next several weeks. We anticipate at this point that there will be sufficient balance to repair the downstairs bathroom as well, although it is important to note that this work will provide temporary accommodations for the fire department, and by no means constitute a permanent solution of existing facility's deficiencies. Town's contract project manager is moving forward on bid specifications for the old library entrance, outdoor stage, and minor working town hall. He'll also draft specifications for the John Pond Park building demolition and the Clear Pond Park shed projects, and will be moving those through procurement. An internal committee consisting of myself, our HR director, and three department heads has been working on an employee recognition program, something I gave you an indication of a little while back, which would be oriented toward recognizing employees who incorporate the town's values into their daily activities. When envisioning recognizing one employee for each of the five values, or five employees total each year, we'll be asking the workforce to nominate candidates ahead of the annual holiday luncheon. The award will consist of a framed certificate that employees can display in their workspace. We're also looking at the possibility of a larger display that we'd have for every year, which would show the awardees every year. I've had several conversations with Todd and Water regarding the water connection requests for the two facilities at Kennevall Drive, 310 and 475. Communication and process has been a significant challenge. Open Meeting Law Training for Committees and Staff, which will be provided by KP Law, will take place on October 26 for two sessions at 4:00 and 6:00 PM. Training will be held at the police station, and the next regular meeting of the Select Board will be on October 24 at 6:00 PM here at the police station. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Excuse me, go ahead.
I just have a question on the open meeting training. Is there like a general email going out to everybody on committees?
We have sent it out last week.
Okay. We're not just leaving it up to each chair to send it out to their group.
No, I believe we sent Tracy Curtis' email to all the members.
It went out to all the members.
Okay.
I assume that when we have the meeting, then they will sign in to say that they are here.
Yeah, we're going to keep close track of that.
Thank you.
Okay.
A few have asked whether it will be recorded as well. So we're hoping to get what we're doing.
All set, Lee?
Um, all set. Thanks.
Thank you.
I'm all set. Thank you, Rich.
Yep. Okay, next on the agenda is to review and possible vote to approve the warrant for November 14, 2002, special town meeting. It's been going on for a while, and the last meeting, we voted to put these articles on the warrant, and this is the final warrant that needs to be voted on by the board. So I entertain a motion to approve this warrant.
So moved. Second?
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Just a couple of things. I see our town moderator is here. Katie Goodfellow, thanks for coming. A couple of things that are going to happen. First thing is the warrant review is going to be on October 24 here at the police station. And I know Tracy, as she normally does, would certainly invite the FinCon.
Ari reached out.
The town moderator. We probably should have members of the planning board, at least one member of the planning board here.
Yep.
At least the chairman, I think, to talk about, you know, those articles. I would also think that we should have the feasibility study committee here as well, and the, of course, the town administrator, and I would say probably the town accountant as well.
Yep.
Okay, I just make sure that's all set.
Great minds, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Just so everybody knows that the, there's an article on there to make modification to the multi-use district at the Lakeville Hospital only, and there's going to be an informational meeting on October 19 at 6:30 PM at the library. And the boards that'll be there will include the planning board, the Select Board, the Board of Health, the Conservation Commission to go over and discuss that article, and also Rhino will be there to present a new proposal to be considered. And the last item on that agenda will be a memo of understanding, which the Select Board is working on with the planning board, so everybody understands what they're going to agree to do, and it's important to do that, so everybody understands before we go to town meeting what the expectations are. Just as a follow-up for that, there's a number of zoning articles with the planning board is holding public hearings on. The first group of public hearings is on October 13 at 7:00 PM, and the next group will be October 27 at 7:00 PM. You need to check the calendar to see which ones, what time the public hearings are. They've already been posted for the meeting of the 13th. They have not been posted for the meeting of the 22nd yet. The last thing is that since the town moderator is here, that I would think that after the town warrant review, as we've done for the last few years, is that we hold an internal meeting, you know, with the town moderator, the town clerk, the town administrator, FinCon chairman, town council, and accountant to go over the warrant, so anybody has any questions, especially the town moderator and the FinCon, that we can address those questions well in advance. So Katie, you're the one that's usually difficult to get ahold of, is, I don't know if you want to, do you want to just send us a few dates, or? I would say maybe the, no, to send, sorry. And I would say that our goal should probably be the first week of November, to get that done, because we want to make sure we have no problems. Okay. Okay, there's, do you have any questions at this point, Katie? At the same time, I would think that we need to talk about logistics of the meeting, too, which we always do. Okay? That's it. Anybody else have any other questions?
No.
Okay, next, next on the agenda is to discuss a possible, I have that out of the water here, possible vote to lay out the drive as a, as a public way. And Ari, you want to give us an update? You just had an update a little while ago.
So, as you know, we were submission to, petition to accept Ledgewood Drive as a public way. This required a number of things to move forward to that, including an article, which you approved in the warrant today, that would allow for the, for the acquisition of the right of way, for the permanent easements. The, just today, we received, or late afternoon, we received the signed waivers of damages and accept, and, and, eminent domain releases for the property, so we're good to go. And the, we had environmental partners go out, inspect the site. We have Frank Moniz here, he's able to talk about the conditions, but it was generally favorable, he said it's a good, they said it's a good condition to maintain.
Do you have any problems with the recommendations? Or have you seen the environmental partners' report? Ledgewood Drive, right. Have you seen the environmental partners?
Yes, they have.
So you're all set? We don't have any?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, thank you. So, um, so what do, so we have to vote to lay out the road?
Correct.
Correct? So I entertain a motion, um, let me just make sure we got this right here.
Do you want me to do it?
So I don't have to read it again?
Do you want me to do it?
Why don't you do it?
Okay. I make a motion that the Select Board of the Town of Lakeville, acting pursuant to General Law, Chapter 82, Sections 21 through 24, deeming that common convenience and necessity require the layout as a town way of Ledgewood Drive and intending to acquire easements necessary for such layout hereby lays out the hereafter described Ledgewood Drive as a public townway. The boundaries of said way hereby laid out are as follows. Ledgewood Drive roadway as built planned Ledgewood Drive, a residential subdivision off Pierce Avenue in Lakeville, Massachusetts, dated August 28, 2020, prepared by Outback Engineering Incorporated on file with the Select Board and Town Clerk's Office. Said plan being hereby adopted as part of this order and attached hereto as Exhibit A, all landline within the above described boundaries as hereby laid out as a town way. The aforementioned layout plans are hereby forwarded to the town clerk for filing, and the foregoing layout is hereby reported to the town for acceptance.
Second?
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We have the form and our fully had signed, so you know. Okay. Okay, next on the agenda is discuss a possible vote to approve the state election warrant for the November 8, 2022 election. I entertain a motion to approve the warrant for the state election as presented.
So moved. Second?
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Okay, next on the agenda is review and discuss possible comments to the zoning board of appeals regarding 109 Bedford Street. Board members have any comments?
Mr. Chairman, I sent to the board the letter that we sent in January.
Yep, I got it right here.
Okay. In which, it's unclear whether any accommodation has been made to the, about the board, but as soon as it increases the affordable housing number, I can tell you I'm sure about that.
Mr. Chair, can I just ask a question?
Yep.
I missed the day everyone went out. Can someone just remind me what took place that day? Didn't, was the planner there that day? Didn't a couple of folks go out to take a look at the property or something?
We did. We went with Mass Housing.
Yeah.
And the owner of the property, and.
Nate was there, too.
And Nate was there as well. So this was on Bedford Street?
Yep.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, but there wasn't any, like, I don't recall any big findings or anything.
It's a pretty narrow site.
Right.
And it was just that it went way out. There's some question of visibility coming out. It looks like on the landscape, kind of, it's messed up, I can tell, but the, it's, there's a fair amount of brush around. Probably won't be able to tell you this. The main issue, I'd say, is number three and four in the, if the board wishes to issue, in the letter that we send specifically regarding percent of affordable units, and reserving certain numbers aside for seniors. I don't think either of those things were done, from what I can tell.
Okay.
They were done. La Baron was done, but the ones at the T station were not done.
Trying in this, this particular.
Yes, it was not.
Right, yeah.
Oh, does any members have any board, any questions, have any, any suggestions?
Just the one I know in perpetuity for the affordable units. I don't know, maybe I missed it? Is that included in here as well?
It will be as far as the permit is concerned.
Yeah.
Okay. Because I know that that was a, you know, a concern of the board. Other than that, everything looks like it's in order to me.
Do you have anything else to add to me?
No.
I, I have some concerns, you know, having to do with the project. First of all, and I'm sure that the town planner addressed this with the, with the Board of Appeals, every one of these units are in the buffer zone. You know, they're not, they're, they're not 20 feet from the property line. They're all within the buffer zone, 13 feet, which is not allowed under the zoning, which means they're going to need waivers to do that, number one. Number two is that all the porches and all the decks are within the buffer zone, that is not allowed under our zoning. So that's a problem, you know? They're, they're asking for two different waivers, and I don't think that's, everybody talks about buffer zones, but, you know, nobody wants to talk about enforcing them. So that's, that's a major concern that I have. If you look at the plan, you can see that they don't comply to the zoning. Most of them are 13 feet, it should be 20 feet. And then the, the decks and the porches, or whatever they are, are within the buffer zone, which is not allowed under a zoning. So I hopefully you'll write that up as an issue. The other thing, I think that, I think they could do a better job on the design of the buildings itself, the look of the buildings. I mean, if you want to compare 40B project, 179, you know, that's Turner Construction's, it's like night and day. I mean, so I, I think they ought to look at, you know, improving the design, because they're just not good-looking, you know, at all, really aren't. The other thing that's supposed to be provided here is a market analysis, and I don't see any market analysis in this packet. That's pretty standard. Right? There's nothing there. The other thing is that there's no condo agreements included in this packet. We've had problems in the past where the developer has not provided the condo agreements, and they're always at the end, which was scurrying around, you know, so there should be some draft condo agreements that the Board of Appeals should insist. The other thing that we talked about was, then one of the things that we requested in our letter back in January 11 was the, to, to have at least two of the units, two-bedroom units, or the first floor bedroom, to be permanently set aside for seniors for 55 and over. And that was discussed, you know, with the developer at the time, so I think that ought to be consideration, too, as well. And one of those units should be an affordable unit. That's all I have. Next on the agenda is to discuss a possible vote of a public way license application for Stallworth Productions to close a portion of Bedford Street for a movie production. We've received a application from Stallworth Productions to close a portion of Bedford Street for a movie production. Attaches to public way license application from Stewart Productions, Stallworth Productions, requesting to close a portion of Bedford Street from Long Point Road on the Rochester Line for a movie production. The application has been signed out to the relative departments. The only question that I would have is, is that the time of the event from 6:00 AM to 3:00 PM, that's detour to close 105, is going to be a long way around. A long way around to get, you'd have to go down, I believe, help me out, Frank, the DPW director's here, you have to get down Long Point Road, I believe, go all the way down to, was that Middle? To Middle, Middle Bow, was that Middle Bow Road?
Yeah.
Go all the way up to Rochester, go down.
Neck Road.
Thank you, Neck Road.
Back up the Long Point.
Back up the Long Point.
Or the other way would be shoot them down.
So that's going to be quite an inconvenience for a lot of people, because a lot, a lot of people, you know, go to the T station that way, come up that 105. So somehow, some way, we've got to let these people know the date of the event is October 17. That's going to be a major inconvenience for them. Major.
The alternate detour would be just shoot over Lakeside, which is much quicker than trying to get into Lakeville.
Right. There's a couple of ways.
It's still.
It's still a long way.
Yeah, it's still a long way.
Because, I mean, you got the ponds and everything around there, so. So the board have any questions on, they want to approve this or not?
Well, just, the only thing that I had was the, the detour issue. School buses, anything else that would be utilizing that road in the morning, in the afternoon as well, would be a concern of mine. And how are we notifying the residents that this road is going to be closed, other than them getting there, and there's a sign that says road closed?
We'll post on social media, make sure that's out there at this point, but yeah, I, I hear the concern.
I think might be a good idea is that I have to have this company get a list of people that are on those roads and mail a postcard, you know, to them to tell them that, you know, this is the situation.
Well, the only issue, there is, there's no one technically to send a postcard to within that area for Bedford to Rochester line.
That's true.
There's no houses.
There's no, I don't know.
There's a few, but that's true. Yeah, you're right.
Yeah, there's no houses from Long Point down.
Correct.
And the houses are long.
Yeah, so it really would not be, well, it could be a bus issue for Old Colony, because Old Colony comes up 105 to come into Lakeville.
They can go down 18.
Copy?
They can go down 18, I suppose, if we tell them.
Well, they still got to go around.
Have to make sure they know.
Yeah, if they go to Old Colony, because Old Colony's to the left.
Right.
You know, a net road, so they're going to have to plan for buses to be earlier. So somebody's got to notify Old Colony that that's been the case.
Yep.
I just have a question. Do we know anything about this production company? Is it?
I did a little research.
Yep.
So it's, The Invitation to a Bonfire is a book that's about, modeled loosely after The Life of Emil Zola. Takes place in the 1920s in a, in a boarding school. They're looking for an isolated location where they can do, so picture that road and picture like a Model T going down that road, it's kind of that, the look they're going for. There's actually some pretty big names associated with this production. They have some pretty well-known actors, if you remember the name, who's the lead in it.
Yeah.
So it's, it's pretty mainstream. It's actually not a movie, it's a, it's going to be a mini-series with a name, see?
Yeah, so I guess that's my point. I, I think if folks knew what it was about, perhaps they'd be willing to be inconvenienced if they could, if we could say, hey, Lakeville's on the map, you know? So instead of just saying the road's going to be closed, maybe we can just write something up, so folks will be excited about it and the inconvenience.
We can do that.
The only other thing.
Frank wants.
Oh, excuse me, Frank.
I can have, I'll work with Ari, but I can have Jen do what we typically do for roadwork, like we did on that, so she can reach out to the bus companies in Old Colony. She actually reach out to the production company, see if they have anything already written up, maybe something they want to write up and give to us to put out there.
Okay. I'm, I also assume that there'll be police details at the beginning and at the end?
Yeah. Yes, that's on there.
That's right, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, so, want to make a motion to approve? Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, number eight on the agenda is discuss and vote to the change of date for the outdoor entertainment permit for the Association Beach and Chavino Avenue. Unfortunately, they had a lot of rain on October 2, so they had to cancel their block party, and they want a postponement until October 23. They're requesting a permit to revise to October 23 for the same hours from 4:07. I entertain a motion to approve that.
So, second?
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay. All right. Next on the agenda is to review and vote to approve the Select Board meeting of September 29.
I'll make a motion to approve. Second, let's discussion.
Okay.
I think on page two, I think what I said was during the floods of 2010, the fire apparatus had to be on opposite areas of town, not the fire station.
Okay. Anything else?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Anything on the new business? Actually, I'd like to, the Betty's Neck event over the weekend, you know, went, went very well, and I don't know everybody on the committee, but I know that Lou Stracey and Nancy and I think Julian, right?
Julian and me.
So thank you very much for doing that. One of the things I would like to, to consider doing, Ari, is to put together a, a small subcommittee to look at the improvements that need to be done at Betty's Neck, because there's, there's a significant number of them. So at the next meeting, I think what we should talk about is that subcommittee and to make up with that committee. Any other new business?
No, I agree with you, Rich. The more we kind of talked about putting things together, the more we were comparing it to things that had been done in the past, and we realized what some of the roadblocks are now. So I, I agree, I think it's a good idea to put a group of folks together to take a look at what's going on.
Okay.
Yep.
Anything on the old business?
Is it old or new? I don't know. I just wanted to acknowledge, I don't have to read the letters, but I just wanted to acknowledge the really nice letters that the Lakeville Arts Council wrote to both, Frank's gone now, the DPW and the Lakeville Police Department, just thanking both of them, both of those departments for all their work on the Fall Festival. You know, the police were there that day, and they did a great job of crossing folks, and the DPW did a lot of work, and. and the DPW did a lot of work, and, you know, the Lakeville Arts just wrote really nice letters to both those departments. So if you're in one of those departments, you haven't seen the letter, ask your manager.
Okay, thank you.
And I just wanted to make mention that the fire station open house was on Saturday. My, according to the fire chief, that this was the most well... I mean, just the attendance was, was really, really high, and it was a perfect day for it.
Yeah, it was a beautiful weekend.
Yeah, we had cars parked all the way into the other parking lot. It was really nice. There was lots of people that came, it was great.
Okay, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.